Good evening. It's six o'clock, so a little bit after. So I'll call tonight's special meeting of the Kannadegwa Town Board to order. Thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight. This nice rainy, nice rainy fall evening. We will begin tonight's meeting with a pledge of allegiance led by Councilperson Casey.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Crystal, would you be able to call the roll, please?
Yes, Councilmember John Casey.
Here.
Councilmember Terrence Finley.
Present.
Councilmember Adeline Rudolph.
Present.
Councilmember David Solomon.
Present.
Supervisor Jared Simpson.
Here. Can you also confirm that tonight's meeting was properly advertised?
Yes, it was.
All right. Yes, so I would like to take a moment. We, I know everybody's aware of the situation in the Middle East and the horrible things that are happening there. So I'd just like to take a moment of silence as we, as we sit here and as we gather and to think about those who have lost their lives and were going through so much tragedy at this time. All right, thank you very much, everybody. All right, we do have one privilege of the floor to start tonight's meeting. So is there anyone who would like to be heard at this time? This is separate from the public hearing comments. So if you're here for the public, if you're here for the public hearing portion, I would like to speak then. This is separate from that.
Well, I'd like to open Mr. Supervisor.
Okay, one second. So did you want to speak or did you want to wait for the public hearing portion?
Jared, it's about the budget proposal as well as flooding comment.
Okay, do you want to make your flooding? Is it all together? Do you want to make your flooding now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Part agree.
Yeah, that'd be great. So go ahead and state your name and
Sure.
your address for the record.
Sorry, I didn't quite understand the
No, you're okay. No, 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 you're fine.
My name is Louis Roy. I live at twenty-five sixty-two St. Louis County One North. Just off in Gibson Street. I wanted to speak first about the flooding of July ninth. I was here a couple of weeks ago when the city as well as the town leaders heard a nice presentation, better than nice, from Katalani. And it spoke about the, pretty much a sucker broke corridor, a little bit of what's like road in the slopes and whatnot. And it's a lot of wealth. Just check that.
Does it need batteries?
I'm
Our mic is not, yeah, if he hits you in the face, I apologize.
There it goes. Thank you.
Very special microphone.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I know you're, it's not you, it's us.
Okay. Well, I've been known to not need a mic. But anyway, there's a situation that also occurred that day for those of us that live on the downslope of the VA hospital. And for those that are not aware, the VA is on the top of the hill, top of the knoll. And what has occurred is the, as most of us know, and I'm talking about the VA administration, God bless those veterans, which I am one. But the administration does what it wants at whatever level, whether it's a local level or the federal level. And then what I'm referring to is the three hundred million dollar project that we've all heard about. And because of where I live, I see the concrete trucks, the asphalt trucks, the stone trucks through many years. And the, if you look at the aerials of which I have forwarded to the town, it shows the acres and acres of newly constructed non-porous pavement, asphalt, concrete, that they have put in in recent years with no thoughts to how to collect the runoff. If you look at the aerials, there's no retention, no detention basins. And what occurred on July ninth was the wash that came down the town road of Bushwood Lane and went out on the twenty-one and washed, it surcharged the state collection system. And so the front yards were flooded, even though it's a pretty good grade heading towards the north, towards Chapin. The water was almost to the center line that day. It's something I have never seen. And I've been there since ninety-two, second time. My parents built the house in fifty-eight, so been there a while. And also in the rear of the properties, the VA has a drainage system, a ditch, and that overflowed flooding. There's two properties from my house towards Bushwood that are on slabs and the water came right into their living space. There was also a, an eyewear place. I got to meet the lady. They were flooded and they had to close for business for a while while damage was, was done. And, and then the people next door are somewhat elderly and they wouldn't, they wouldn't dream of having to come out. He's in his nineties, she's eighty-nine. And if she was here, she'd kick me for telling her age. But, so I'm here kind of speaking for the neighborhood. And we need something done. And, and I met the next day, I came to the town hall and, and, and Mr. Simpson and Mr. Finch, almost as if they were waiting for me. And they said, well, glad to see you. We just received a response from, or an inquiry from Senator Schumer's office. What can we do to help? And I bring this up for two reasons. One is to remind you as a board, and maybe even educate some who may not know about it, that the problem is just waiting for another rain event to reoccur and hurt those people again. I fortunately, all I had was water in my garage. It didn't hurt anything. We were a little bit higher than everybody else. But this ditch out back roared like I'd never seen it. And, and if an individual went to the town, yeah, they might smile and give you some lip service. And I think even the town, you're not, you're not big enough. I think we need the federal government to fight the federal government. Maybe fight's not the right word, but to deal with them. And I'm here to remind the town board that that problem still exists. And I speak for seven, I think, properties. But also, they, they didn't just, the wash didn't just come our way. You probably heard the city say that it came down E Street, it came down Sherlot Street, and it flooded that new apartment complex on Gorham, two forty-three, I think it is. It's the same problem. So we need, we need to hold the VA administration responsible to go into a preventative mode where they can mitigate this from happening again. Enough of my flood. Now, I have a, you want me to sit down for the
Yeah, so let's, yeah, you use more than your three minutes, but I
Sorry.
No, 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 I
Well, it was the microphone. It was the microphone.
It was the microphone. You gotta reset. No, yeah, so it, it's easier for the transcription and everything to keep those separate. So when people go through and read the minutes, all the budget counts will be all at once.
Very good.
But you'll have another, you'll have your chance. Thank you very much. Anybody else in the audience? And then I know, Mr. Casey, you had wanted to make a comment privilege of the floor as well?
Yep.
Okay. Yes.
I am Margaret Clutter from four seven oh three Grandview Park in Kannadegwa. I live about a mile down the street from Mr. Lloyd. And at the time of that flooding, I live on a lower side of the hill between twenty-one and, and County Road Four. And I ended up between my fence and the neighbors, a six to eight inch deep, sixty-five feet long, ten foot wide pond. And there is no pond there. So, and this has happened, I've lived in my house for thirty-seven years. And this is the fourth time it has flooded, but it has never been like this, that it came roaring down the street and over twenty-one into the properties that are below twenty-one. And you had flooding down County Road Four and every other place. So I agree totally with Mr. Lloyd that we need to get the federal government to understand the implications of what they are doing environmentally, playing all the concrete pads. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna fix that light. Sorry. Do you have batteries in your pocket? Don't forget.
I think you might have time to replace.
To replace the mic.
Very special microphone.
So we'll give a pause for the mic replacement, Mr. Casey, and then you're up.
Yeah, along those batteries last.
Okay. All right, go ahead, sir.
I'd like to start by making a motion that we reduce the line item in the budget, the supervisor located on page fifty-two, to a figure of twenty-two thousand five hundred and seventeen dollars, which includes the current salary and a raise of three percent for inflation.
Thanks. We have a motion on the table. Do we have a second?
Is that the same motion we had at the last meeting?
That was the same motion. Can the same motion be made?
I don't believe there's any proposition.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion on the table. We have a second. Any discussion? Are you still looking on that?
A lot of discussion. Why don't you have your discussion and I'll
Okay.
Pretty sure.
Okay.
I'll modify it if I need to. I think you should go ahead and discuss because you put just modify. You want me to modify? No, I don't, I don't believe there's a bar to repeating a motion.
Okay.
I guess I'd start by asking you, Doug, why did you include ninety-four thousand dollars in the budget for the supervisor?
So people, I'm gonna go back up now that I fixed the microphone.
You might want to stay there.
Okay.
Just getting my exercise, going back and forth with the silly microphone tonight. All right.
They'll be on the camera with you.
Right, yeah, I did. I just got my haircut today just for this. So, so thank you. Okay, so, John, you asked a question, why included ninety-four thousand dollars in the twenty twenty-four tentative budget for the town supervisor? So as you are well aware, the town board has been discussing this all year long throughout the year twenty twenty-three. We have been wrestling with this back and forth. And the short answer is, I included it because it was requested by the department head, in this particular case, the town supervisor. And I felt like it was important to put in there so that the full board and the full public could have the deliberation on it.
And I've heard you say that this is not an operational need, but rather a political one. Could you explain what you mean by that?
I have answered a question that has been asked of me in the past by responding and saying, I will implement whatever political decision the town board makes. And I stand by that. My job is not to make policy. My job is not to interpret policy. The position of town manager is apolitical, and we are taught and educated to specifically take whatever policies, political or otherwise, that the town board adopts, and then go implement those.
So then, referring to the Finger Lakes Times article of ten eight twenty-three, it says here that the spending plan was crafted by manager Doug Finch. What I'm hearing you say is that is not accurate?
I think that there were, and I don't want to speak for anybody, but I think that there were comments or reports of the Finger Lakes Times article that were not exactly portrayed relative to our situation. And so, you know, as the, you know, as, as the town board well knows, I mean, there was back and forth earlier this year, the budget, the twenty twenty-four budget has been, you know, we just, we started discussing that back on January the sixth, essentially. And there were moves that were made. I was not appointed the budget officer at first, for the first time since I've been the town manager, was not appointed the budget officer, which required a change in the town board's budget development process and policy, which the town board later came back and changed. I want to say it was either April or May. Don't, don't hold me exactly to that. It may have been March. I just don't remember the exact date off the top of my head, but it was sometime, let's just say, spring. And then after conversations with the town supervisor, the town supervisor, per New York State law, has hundred percent authority to appoint any elector of the town of Kannadegwa outside of a board member as the budget officer. And so after a conversation, and he could certainly appoint himself, actually, New York State law, by default, the supervisor is the budget officer unless the supervisor so chooses to appoint someone else. And so, you know, this was a little bit rehashing. The town board very well knows this, but that was one of the things that the town board, when they originally enacted the town manager position, was they created a budget development policy to clearly explain how a budget was going to get prepared and presented to them. There's state law that tells the exact steps and process, starting with the department head stage, then the tentative stage, and the preliminary stage, which is where we're at today, and then the final adoption stage. And that's all spelled out in the state law. But, you know, to answer your question in terms of that process, you know, in terms of, you know, how we got to this point, you know, it's been a little bit of ups and downs, back and forth, but we got to the point where I was appointed the budget officer. I met with each of the department heads, put the requests in, and then had to go back and actually take those requests and develop it into a spending plan that actually was balanced. Because as always happens, when the department heads put their requests in, generally speaking, it's so far out of balance, the taxpayers would have to pay a hundred times what their current tax rate is. And so I had to go in and actually reduce spending and expenses to bring that back into a balanced budget. So, sorry, that was a long-winded answer, but
I appreciate that. Thank you. So Jared, why did you include ninety-four thousand dollars in the budget for the supervisor role?
It's outlined in the budget.
Can you share that with all those people here?
As we discussed, and as, as we shared, I don't know if you remember, we had discussions on the budget policy, and we had discussions on, you know, what other rates for supervisors were. I think it came back at about forty-eight thousand. That was the average. And then we looked at the communications officer piece, and that was added in there as well. At forty-six, I think the CIC had been asking for sixty-eight for the last several years, fifty-five to sixty-eight thousand. So that was the sum of those two numbers.
But just as a correction to that comment you made, the CIC requested and for the twenty twenty-three budget, a number of thirty-five thousand dollars included for the communications officer?
For the twenty
Twenty twenty-three budget.
Okay, so I was pulling from the
And I believe that that motion to include that
So, John, can I correct you?
Yes, please.
Point order. They requested a larger amount, and I believe it was adjusted down to that amount. So that amount is what they requested.
They requested thirty-five.
They did not request
And by motion from you, it was reduced to ten thousand dollars.
Okay, I stand corrected.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Now, how did you arrive at a figure of ninety-four thousand dollars? But before you answer that, let me go on to just point out, this is the same CIC that you, just about a month ago, wanted to dissolve per resolution. So now you find a need to comply with the CIC, even though you wanted to resolve it or dissolve it per resolution without consulting any of the board members, right?
Incorrect.
Okay. I know, I wasn't contacted about that.
You also didn't know about the budget meetings that we had too, so
Oh, there were staff, there were staff budget meetings.
Let me finish. So the CIC has, has been in existence, and I remember for quite a while, there are discussions on the purpose of the CIC, what it was doing and the charge. And we did have the discussions, the town manager and I discussed it. We decided what to do, and the decision was to put that resolution and put it together. I believe the manager wrote the resolution, and we put it in there to have that discussion, force the discussion on the CIC. I remember discussions that had been had by, I think, every board member, you included, wondering where the CIC was going, what the scope was, what the charge was, and if we still needed it.
I question many things when we do operations. Absolutely. But how did you arrive with the ninety-four thousand dollars?
I believe I, that was asked and answered.
How did you do it? Maybe I missed the answer.
Forty-six for the average.
Where'd you get that number from?
It was presented by the town manager.
Where'd you get that number from, Doug? Maybe I should have stayed up.
Should have stayed up.
Didn't authorize people on Zoom.
From that corner, so sorry about that. So the forty-six thousand, there is a memo in the budget, and obviously I had, the town board knows I had presented this, maybe July-ish, where it sent a memo detailing all of the salaries of all of the supervisors, as well as all of the managers and the comparisons. And I'm doing this from memory. So if you have data, otherwise, please feel free to correct me. But I'm pretty sure that the analysis was that the average supervisor in Ontario County salary was forty-six thousand, I believe is what that was.
Not at, not at this time.
Okay, so where'd the rest of the money come from that you wanted to put in the budget for the supervisor line item here?
From the discussions that we had about the increase in communication and public outreach and public engagement, like we had discussed.
So there was no real quantification or comparison of what other people filling this role might be getting paid locally or around the area? It was just a random number that was chosen?
No, I would, I would disagree because that's where the number was, and that's where the, where the numbers came from. But also, I was looking at what other supervisors in the area were.
So supervisor, not communication.
The comparable, the comparable supervisors. No, don't, that's not words, you know, don't put words where they're not coming out of.
I thought you said you put forty thousand in the budget for the communications officer.
John, the, the number I saw was fifty-six, eight-ten, the average salary of town supervisors, excluding mayors. That, that, that's what you included in our pattern. So anyway, if I can go back and answer the question where I was, unless, do you have something else? Because I don't want to get cut off again. I just want to be able to answer. So, and now that you, why don't you restate your question? And then if I can answer and complete the answer, then I'll be able to get it out.
Did you do a study of any type to confirm what the average salary for the communications officer or director, or whatever you want to call them, receives locally?
Hey, well, I believe we had in, in that discussion, looking at the numbers of where, where communications officer, communications director would be, any, any type position like that, you'd be looking at at least sixty to sixty-five thousand dollars plus benefits.
Who was this discussion with?
This was discussion that we had had. I can't really, we had had these discussions in executive session. I don't know if you recall.
I don't. And do you have a question, Jared, that you want to put ahead?
No, I just wanted to point out that there are no other municipalities in our area that have a communications officer that you could use to develop a payday for. This is, will be unique for our town. There are no other towns that feel a need for that. And I agree with them. We don't need them. I would just like to say that there is, especially with you and I have had, the figure ninety-four does come from another place. If you were to stop teaching, you need to replace your salary. That was the origin of the number in the nineties. That was a discussion you and I had several months ago.
And I would concur that I had a discussion similar.
So I, so I would also say that, I mean, I know that we're going longer than, longer than the three minutes on this, but it's, it's important conversation. Regardless of that, you know, irregardless of that, that discussion, that number is not a replacement. Let me make that very clear. That number is a, not a replacement. That number is a decrease from where it is now. I don't think that's the point of the discussion. I think the point of the discussion is the budget and the number that we are, you know, and I understand the need to, you know, and I understand the tenor, I understand the need to make it, make it an attack, and I understand that. And I'm totally comfortable with that. But I think we need to keep the focus on the budget and that, and that number.
I think the focus is on budget, Jared. The only issue, in my view, remaining from budget discussions we've had, is this one line item. We've had two workshops. Everything else has been agreed to. And that result of the workshop we had was a whopping decrease of nineteen thousand dollars in the overall budget. This is a seventy-two thousand dollar increase in that particular line item. Original question was, the ninety-four thousand comes from. First discussion I remember having was, that's a number you'd be comfortable with, was what the county pays plus the pre-healthcare that all members of the board and supervisors get. That's a number that you would be comfortable with to become full-time supervisor. Didn't ask for it last year. All of a sudden, it's this year. I'm not necessarily a suspicious person. Well, really, I am sometimes. It makes me ask a question. It's, it seems to me, just being honest with you, it's more of a personal need than it is a town need. And I can't justify in my mind I'm still talking, please. I didn't interrupt you. I can't justify that in my mind, representing the people in our town, throwing another seventy-two thousand dollars into the pot here, where in my view, it's not required. The job of supervisor has been done by you efficiently all this year. I don't think we need a communications officer. It's a job of each one of us to communicate with the public. We don't need a separate mouthpiece to do that. We can all do that and do it very efficiently. Therefore, I, I just cannot support this. I agree with John in this, in this area.
I, I personally feel that all these people have come into this room to voice their opinion, right? We really should hear from them, not, not discuss amongst ourselves right now. That's my opinion. Right. I believe this was a discussion
To that point.
So I think, I think we've, I want to take what Dave said, because this is repeating a lot of the same discussion we had at the last meeting and rehashing a lot of it. I think there are residents who took time out of their evenings, out of their schedules to come in. We've had twenty or thirty, we've had multiple emails sent in, some, and, you know, many in favor, many not, many against. So let's give them a chance to be heard. So I'll give you another minute, and I'm gonna call for a vote.
To that point, I believe most of these people probably have already been heard via an email or text. So what we're gonna get is probably similar comments with many of these people saying, I don't approve of this change. And there's gonna be other people that say, I do approve of this change. And there's gonna be other people that say I do approve of this change, I think what's more important is that these people who elect us. Hear from us openly and frankly where we stand on this issue, so that when this vote comes up in November seventh. They know exactly where the candidates stand on this and more importantly, when the primary comes up in a year and a half. And you're running against somebody for that, they need to know exactly how you came about this and where you stand on this. And I think they probably would rather hear from us talking about this in an open frank discussion, rather than having it behind a closed door. In an executive session, then they really, they've voiced their, we've heard it, we could go and ask people to give a show of hands. To tell us how many people are opposed to this and how many people agree with this, but I'm not done asking questions. And I think we need to get down to, what is the role and responsibility, Jared? That you plan on undertaking for a compensation of ninety-four thousand dollars?
And John, we've had, we've had these discussions.
Most of them behind closed doors.
Well. You, you and I have had multiple discussions about this. Uh, we have shared thoughts and every time that a thought was shared. And you, we, we talked about it and you said, well, I need to see this and then I could be comfortable with it. It was shown to you and then it was something different.
No, Jared, and, and you know what, just, just for amusement. Would you folks like to continue to hear us talking about this? Raise your hand if you want to hear us continue to talk about this. An overwhelming majority. So are you here for them?
I'm here to let them, let them speak.
You're here to let these people get what they want to hear, so, and that's hear us talk about this?
Maybe what we should do is hear from them and then.
Continue the conversation.
Yeah, well, what's, what are, what's your, what's your next question, because I, I see you have a dissertation there.
Well, I guess the whole thing is, Jared, we have an operating agreement with the town manager to provide the same services. That you're talking about providing, even though you won't answer the question here tonight, but to provide the same services. That I think you're expecting to provide as the full-time superintendent, so to me, that's a breach of contract. Additionally, we have an organizational chart that's been existence since two thousand and seventeen. Which clearly shows you as being the CEO, or excuse me, the CFO of this community. The state of New York recognizes the supervisor as the CFO of the town. This org chart recognizes the CFO, you as the CFO of this town. Doug's operational agreement recognizes you as the CFO of this town and he's responsible for the communications, all communications. And I think they've been excellent, up to the point where the newsletter stopped being published and Doug, why is the newsletter no longer published?
Um, sure. Let me answer that question, I also have the numbers, can I just clarify the numbers from earlier, just so that we're all a hundred percent on the same page? So this is on page one twelve of the budget, uh, it's the twenty-twenty-two comparison of the chief elected official numbers. So the overall average salary is forty-one thousand, one hundred and sixty-seven dollars and eighty-two cents of the eleven that were identified. Then it specifically, as council member Solder said, the average salary of the town supervisors excluding mayors is fifty-six thousand, eight-ten. And then the average salary of the mayors is thirty-one thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars and eighty-three cents, just for clarification, just to be transparent.
And if you exclude the town candidate, well, the average salary is sixty-six thousand, four hundred.
Yeah, I, those are the eleven, I mean, just that we're listed, so.
Just let me clarify, Doug, if you might, let me for a moment, please. The comparison you're referring to on page one eleven, I think illustrates clearly. How effective the town manager has been in the town of Canada. All of you folks probably don't have this in front of you, but the town of Canada with the executive salaries. Of the town of Canada with two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. The town of Farmington is three hundred and eleven thousand dollars and the town of Victor is nearly five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So I say, based on that, our town manager is doing a pretty effective job. At managing our operations at a pretty reasonable cost. Of the, we're gonna potentially raise it by seventy-five thousand dollars.
Point of order, that's no, there's no point for discussion, but we understand that, we appreciate what John had to say. Um, so John, I just want to, what's that?
Do you want me to answer that?
Yeah, but sorry, go ahead, I, I, you got cut off, so you didn't get to answer, I'm sorry.
That's all right, because I started with the others, so, um, your question was, let me, can you just repeat the question for me again?
Why are we no longer publishing a news?
The town newsletter, so, as you know, uh, twenty-twenty-three has been a, a very, very unusual year. Uh, starting from the very beginning, uh, with the, with the changes that were made. Um, you know, I had a resident ask me this, uh, just recently and I, they sent out an email trying to explain that. As many of us know, and, and I'm gonna. Say this very carefully, in, um, April of this year. We had a very unusual situation where a, uh, first amendment auditor came into the building with a video camera. Uh, filming and while the, uh, first amendment auditor, uh, did not violate any quote-unquote laws. Per se, Mr. Attorney, correct me if I'm incorrect in saying this, but, um, the followers of the first amendment auditor. Just sheerly overwhelmed staff, all of our resources, we were dealing with literally hundreds and thousands of calls. A week coming in from all over the world, all over the country, we were dealing with threats that were coming in. People calling us and telling us that they were going to barricade all the doors, uh, of the town hall and kill all of the employees. That they were gonna let the, light the building on fire, I mean, time after time after time, I had to call the sheriff's department and actually ask an officer. To be here in the building and talk with staff. Um, in part because of that, not fully, but in part due to that. Uh, we had a pretty large transition in staff. And at that point in time, uh, we were, we were undergoing through a number of changes that basically I had to initiate. The town board every single year passes a resolution at the beginning of each year that says in it, and I'm gonna paraphrase and your attorney can correct this. But in between meetings of the town board, the town manager is responsible for the operations of the town. And so, you know, I have to sometimes make decisions to make sure the lights stay on. And so we were having to prioritize in doing things that were still important and that need to get done, but even moving staff around. That was part of it, another part of it was this ongoing conversation. And we're very much, and the supervisor and I have this conversation again today, we've been in limbo with what it is that we're gonna be doing relative to communications. He had said he wanted to do the newsletter, that he was going to be doing more of the communications and we were doing this back and forth. And that's one of the particulars that just didn't end up happening. I've had a conversation just, uh, even today and yesterday with the town attorney, at the end of the day. The town code does require the town manager, uh, in part to be responsible for public relations. I do agree with what council member Finelli said, I think all of us are responsible for communications to some extent. But at the end of the day, the newsletter does need to get done and I've been very clear on this. Regardless if whatever the outcome of this is, in favor, against, whatever, it, it doesn't make any difference to me. I will make sure the newsletter gets done, we will jockey the staff around and make sure that the newsletter is done and back up and operational. We have had a difficult summer, but we've also had a positive summer. Obviously, we had a very historic flood that none of us could have expected on July ninth and on July ninth. Uh, we had a brand-new code enforcement officer who had literally been on the job for one week and I called him and I said. Meet me at Outhouse Park and it's at five o'clock on a Sunday night. And we started backing town pickup trucks up to Happiness House to evacuate twenty-three people and he and I were waiting through water to get those twenty-three people out. Um, there've been any number of things and everybody has pitched in this year through very unusual circumstances, including the town supervisor. And the town board members, everybody, um, it's been a very, very unusual year and I apologize. Chris, can you let the person in the waiting room in, please? Um, so, you know, in terms of why the newsletter hasn't gotten done. Um, supervisor or, uh, council member Casey, I mean, it's, it's all of those things, it's all of those things combined. The biggest problem has been, we've been in this state of limbo and I've said this repeatedly at town board members where we have one foot in and one foot out. And quite frankly, I need the town board to make some decisions so that I can go out and implement those decisions.
Could you give me an idea of, uh, what kind of effort it takes in terms of hours to complete the newsletter on a monthly basis?
So the newsletter, when the newsletter first started, it was actually first started in twenty fifteen by, uh, former supervisor Pam Helmy. And it was done two times a year, that's the start of the newsletter. In March of twenty-seventeen, when I became the town manager, is when it started a monthly electronic newsletter format. Because we were trying to communicate and push the information out to the residents. And it started out very, what I would say simplistic, it was a three, four-page newsletter and then it grew in time. And it evolved as many things do and so our project teams were adding to it. So when we originally, uh, started the newsletter, John Robitella, who was actually, uh, supporting us in a variety of, um. Uh, different initiatives as our planning board secretary, he actually worked with Sarah Reynolds from my office at the time and was really putting that together. And so, you know, if in terms of hours, maybe ten hours a month. Uh, no more than twenty hours a month, even as it evolved, but just to kind of give you a ballpark. You know, where it's at, that, that's kind of the effort.
So we might have spent seventy-four thousand dollars to, uh, produce newsletter that takes ten to twenty hours of, a month? That's kind of what I'm hearing in summary. Um. What I'm also hearing you say is that this discussion. And this potential supervisor being a full-time role has gotten in the way of our operations as a town. What I've just heard you say.
I've, I've said a couple of different times, whether the supervisor position makes twenty thousand dollars a year or two hundred thousand dollars a year. It makes no difference to me, that's a political decision for the town board. And it should not impede the operations of the town. There are policies that the town board needs to set to clearly define how it is that we do things. And in some cases, those policies this year have created some ambiguity in terms of our operations and need to be identified. And cleared up, um, one such is, and supervisor and I were talking about this today, the agenda. It says the town manager and town supervisor shall set the agenda. Well, that works until we disagree on something and it doesn't give any provision for that. So those are the types of things that I would say in terms of operational impacts. That's where it becomes very important for the town board to set clear policy for us.
So another example that came up last night, um, when we went to the town of Farmington to, uh, discuss. Uh, the water district up there, the joint water district between the town of Farmington and the town of Canada, well. The Hazmet Plan came up, who's doing that, who's responding to the county?
The county Hazmet Plan or the H two O partner plan?
The county has.
Yeah, I'm, I'm working on that.
Is that an operational issue, is that a communication issue, why are you doing it?
It's a county, it's a county issue.
It's a county.
It's a county and town issue, yes.
So all town supervisors are responding to the.
Uh, yeah, there are a lot of supervisors who are doing that.
How do you feel about that, Doug?
Um, that, so. In the past, what I would tell you is when the Haz, uh, plan has been reviewed. And it is good to review it regularly, um, the staff and I have worked to identify all of the objectives. And all of the situations and all of the, um, the different items, uh, that need to, I've been, I'd be identified. Uh, the action plans and then that plan has been submitted to the town board and approved by resolution before it gets submitted to the county, that's the way we've done it in the past. Um, not every town does it the same way. But what I would say is there's an inherent problem in the operations of the Ontario County government that we, we're not able to fix, unfortunately. And, and I've talked to the county administrator, I talked to him his third day on the job about this and there's a communication issue and that the managers. Get left out of the communication and so, um, it did come up last night, you're right. Uh, a question was brought up by a representative from Farmington asking us about ours. And I have not been involved with it in any way, shape or form, so I have no idea what's in it or not in it. Um, and I, I just haven't been involved with it this round.
Well, I need to go back to the Finger Lakes Times article, ten, eight. And ask you, Jared, you said in that article that there's going to be a shift of responsibilities. Are you referring to the P R and the communications when you say that?
So I'm referring to the shift in procedures that we will have to make that we have already identified. Uh, in fact, that we don't have a communicate, a set communications policy. Uh, something that we've been talking about, something that Doug and I have been talking about, saying that we need, we do not have one of those. That would be a shift in policy and procedures that we have.
I believe, yes, contractually. Doug's contract clearly states. Who's going to be doing, who's going to be handling the operations in the town? And if you would like, I can read that for us.
No, and that's, no, you don't have to, so, and that is part of the discussion, I, I believe with that also. And any discussions that we might have and any changes, uh, the town manager would need to agree to any of those changes. If they were to come forward. I believe that's also in the contract.
I believe the contract requires Doug to sign off in writing any changes to the operations of that agreement. I don't believe you've done that yet on anything, have you done? Is it your intention to?
I think, well, that's, is that, I mean, that's more of a, we're crossing a line into a personality issue, I believe.
You want to answer it, Doug?
No, so, I mean, in terms of policy, I mean, my priority concern is, uh. I'm gonna say, I'm actually, I remember to phrase this the way I'm gonna say it, so I just came back from managers conference, international city managers conference. And one of the keynote speakers was Emmett Smith, famous Dallas Cowboys superstar, running back. And, uh, one of the things that he talked about is the need to keep your eye on the most important thing on the field. And the most important thing, obviously, in a football game is the football. And whether or not you fumble the football and he used the analogy to the five thousand, five hundred of us managers that were there. The most important thing on our field, our football, is our residents. And he said, don't fumble the ball. And so if we need to look at something that will benefit the residents. I am willing to have that conversation, but I am not willing to blatantly hand over some sort of my responsibilities. Through some sort of political power shift.
And to that point, I wanted to ask, Jared also noted in that article that our government underwent a significant reorganization. I don't think our town governance has changed since two thousand and seventeen.
Uh, our government has not changed since two thousand and seventeen, the organizational chart stands, whether or not the town board updates it. Uh, the, the previous one will stand and, you know, we've had some vacancies. Uh, we've worked very, very hard to recruit talented people, some people would use the word poach from other municipalities. And we've rebuilt the team pretty quickly and the team is getting back up and operational and things are, uh, returning to normal operations.
John, can I clarify a statement that you just made? So I believe, um. You said, you, you questioned the comment of your reorganization.
Yeah, it says here in this article, Simpson noted that the town government underwent a significant reorganization early spring.
Okay, do you recall? You recall when they appointed, so when we appointed the town manager as a part-time planner?
Absolutely.
Okay, so. That change in reorganization in the structure, uh, was, was a change in that. So we appointed, uh, the manager a part-time planner and we also appointed, um, an administrative assistant. As a part-time planner.
Yeah, I don't think.
So I, I believe that's a.
I don't think that constitutes a government significant reorganization. Doug is responsible, per this operating agreement, for periodically evaluating the performance of the town operations. And to make adjustments as are deemed necessary to do so. So I don't think that anything in this operating agreement has changed, nor has anything in the town code. Relative to the town manager's operations change, nor has anything relative to the organizational chart changed. Since two thousand and seventeen.
If, if I could just indulge you for a second, just to address the, the planner related issue. So the issue was, we did not have a planner at that point in time, and I believe that was April. We were down to one zoning officer at the time, and it was down to one code enforcement officer. And the town code of the town of Canada allows for either code enforcement officer, zoning officer, or planner to make zoning law determinations on applications that come in. And the office was getting backed up, and there was only really one person able to do the zoning law determinations. So when I came to you and asked also, with no change in my contract, with no pay or anything else, asked to be appointed as part-time planner, that was so I could help the office out. And obviously, with my master's degree in public administration and all my years in land use planning, I clearly passed the requirements of Ontario County to hold the position of planner. That was so I could do zoning law determinations to help the staff. The staff is back up and running now. I am no longer doing zoning law determinations.
I'd just like to point out, if I could, your presentation here of what a difficult year it's been, there's one element that you left out. And that was people we lost during that time period. We've lost several people altogether. From that, that time period, when this crazy guy came in with the First Amendment stuff. That's when we started losing people, roughly at that time. We lost our senior code enforcement officer. We lost, uh, Jonathan is a zoning officer. And we lost an administrative assistant in that area. That was a key element in slowing down things like the town loser in any other communication, because we had people poached away from us. We had turned, it's difficult watching yourself, but that's the way the game is played these days. But that was a, I know you're well aware of that, that happened, but I don't know if the public is so aware. It was extremely thin. You had to go into that position and be appointed a planner. And it did slow down communication because of that. Last question coming out of that article is, you quote again, many of the supervisory duties that previous boards had assigned to the town manager will be going back to the town supervisor. Could you clarify which ones, what you mean by that?
So, John, have you ever talked to a newspaper before?
Many times.
Many times. Do, do they all? Do they, do they get you word for word?
So are you, you saying that this was not your position?
Cause I'm, I'm asking you, do they quote you word for word?
I think, if I'm not mistaken, this came out of an email that you sent the reporter. So I have to believe it's pretty accurate. It wasn't a quote.
Okay, so an email that, and I do believe, and I'm going to defer to the town attorney, who previewed everything that I said.
Did he charge you for that or is he charging the town for that?
That's a little hostile.
Yeah, so.
Why? So it's a relevant question.
So I would.
He's the chief financial officer of our organization here, the town. And as such, you know, and I have a problem with mixing chief financial officer responsibilities with CBO responsibilities.
You know what?
With CBO responsibilities, but that's a simple question.
I bet he didn't charge anything.
Okay, good.
I'll answer the question, although one, I don't think it's a good policy to talk about unless you have a question, unless you are questioning my invoices, which you are absolutely entitled to.
Right.
Feel free to do so. I'm not embarrassed about that. From an attorney client confidentiality standpoint, I would suggest we don't make it happen. That's what I think is important to respond. As you all know, I don't generally charge to talk to any of them. Conversation and question will not appear on any invoices. I bill on my, you know, as I do bill, as I do invoice, I put it in my phone, in the invoice making app. It's not in there. I haven't filled Jared, I haven't filled, uh, board member case number, so we're, we're all board member finale for phone call, as long as I can, I don't know if ever.
Good, thank you. I think the basic question was, did you review that email?
I sure did.
And you agreed with everything you stated?
Didn't say that. I reviewed it and said, yes, you can send this. But was not. I don't understand that it, you're asking if I believed those statements to be true or if I knew them to be true.
No, I think Jared's saying what he said, what he said, whether it was oral or by an email, was misquoted. So it's a simple question. I mean, was that statement in that email?
I don't know. You definitely looked at the email off the top of my head and in an effort not to get, to say yes or no, because I don't, I'm not going to verify quotation that I'm looking at. I'm sure Jared can show you the email. I did look at it. I did say, yes, this is acceptable to send.
Let's go back to the basic question. Are you claiming, Jared, that you did not say this, or that's not what you wanted to say? So, this goes to the basic premise of why are we doing this? Why are we adding seventy five?
So John, let me, let me try to wrap this up a little bit. One of the, one of the issues and one of the, one of the concerns and considerations that we have that I've been hearing from multiple people is that we have a situation in the town of Canada where we've put a lot of responsibility and weight on our town manager. The town manager's pet position, and I'm not, and I bet if we were to ask the town manager, and, because it's the type of person he is, he would say, bring it on, I can keep doing it, because that's the type of person that he is. Which is, and we're lucky to have him in that position, and we're lucky to have him there. But if something were to happen and he became incapacitated, there is no next level of executive leadership or duplicate leadership. What would happen with finance? What would happen with budgeting? What would happen with inter municipal relations? Those, what would happen with those? I know we have a contingency policy. I know we have, we have other things, and I don't want to get into the, the personnel issues. But we don't, we don't have that. And part of the other discussion is, you know, you know, you can bring in, bring in an assistant. Okay? But as residents have clearly shared, residents want elected officials to be accountable, and they don't want that, and that other layer, that other assistant would even be more expensive and would be upwards of a hundred thousand dollars or more to have somebody in that position. Now, my next, the next thing that kind of put it over the edge, you know, kind of really solidified, solidified this for me when I heard a lot about the assessments. And I'm not going to ask for a show of hands, because that would be inappropriate. But I want everybody to think about if they liked their assessments. If they were happy with their assessments, if they thought they got a fair shake with their assessments. If they got heard at their assessments, okay? I had to defend that, even though we, I couldn't talk to, you know, we are removed from that part of the process as a board. So I had to go out publicly and defend it. I remember conversations, I have notes from a conversation with you. And you said, if ninety-five percent of these assessments are being changed, the process is wrong. You said, I don't trust the process. You know, you changed your tune, you like the process, I don't know why. But something happened and you like, then you like the assessment process. But that, and I'm, if I'm going to stand and have to defend something, and I did multiple times defend it. I spoke with our attorney, I spoke with our, our manager, saying, what's going on with this? I'm not comfortable, and they assured me that we're doing the right process, we're doing the right thing. Uh, and then even today, even yesterday, another email from a resident who did not even get an appointment for on grievance day, zero. And all his neighbors, they got theirs reduced by, you know, seventy, eighty, ninety, a hundred thousand dollars. He got nothing. What am I going to say to him? I'm going to say, well, I had nothing to do with that. I can't say that. I can't sit here and say, in good faith, and make those comments to people and say, well, sorry, you know, I know the buck stops here, but I had nothing to do with the buck. If the buck stops here, then my intent with this is to be more involved in that day-to-day discussion and operation, so we can be proactive with a lot of these things. I mean, I don't know, I didn't, I didn't try to make, I didn't try to adjust or argue mine. I don't know if anybody in here tried to adjust or argue their assessments. I don't know how many times people got in to this, to meet with the assessors, if they got zero, one, two, three, I don't know. But if I'm going to sit and have a resident saying, you know, my taxes went up eighteen hundred dollars, what do I do? You know, on that end of things, I better be involved in that. And it's, if I'm going to, if I'm going to take that, then I'm going to be on the front end of it and not just taking it on, on the back end when it comes through.
So you're saying, because then I received dozens of calls from many of my constituents relative to the appraisal process, that I ought to be on the front end of it as a board member? Am I any different than you?
I'm saying, as the, as the town supervisor, there's a significant difference between the town supervisor and a board member.
As a town supervisor, when you ran for the position, you understood that it was a role of a CFO. Very clear. You knew what Doug's operating agreement said. You know what the town code says relative to Doug's performance as the town manager, and you knew what the organizational chart showed. So you ran under those pretenses or those facts when you ran. What's changed? Now you want to become the communications director at a cost of seventy five thousand dollars.
And that's, I mean, I know that's a good, that's a good soundbite, but it's more than that. It's more than that communications piece like I just had one. So, I mean, I think.
That's the point, right? That this is going to expand beyond just the communications piece, we're finally getting that out and it's coming public, that you intend to take over some or part or all of the operations of the town manager.
Um, it, in, in.
One, I think that's in violation of his contract.
You brought that, so by bringing that up, I fear that that is in violation of the contract, bringing it up in a public meeting. So I'm gonna.
It says right here, this is public.
I, I know, but.
This contract's public.
You are correct.
It is. It was attached to the resolution.
So.
I think I talked about anything in this contract that won. It's a public document. This document says that he's responsible for all communications within this town. And it says that the only way it can be modified is if it's done by him consenting so. And then it's got to be consented to in writing.
And I, and I think we can, I think you're, I think we can pick and choose, and we're kind of picking out bites.
I'm not picking anything. I'm telling you what the facts are.
I believe, um, earlier Terry said, you correct me if I'm wrong, that all town board members are in charge of communication.
Absolutely.
So again.
Absolutely.
So.
But this is something you want to be paid seventy five thousand dollars for. I'm looking at that forty-eight K myself.
Okay.
It's not, look, you do the job for fifty grand too. Go back to what's magic about ninety-four, magic thing about ninety-four, leaving that school system, coming here full-time and the backs of the residents. That's what it is.
To me, that was, I think that's, and that is fair to, to have that, you know, to say that is your opinion.
Well, you told me that.
That is completely fair.
You told me that.
That is completely.
You would take that in order to be whole time. Those were your words to me.
Same words you said to me. Any other comments?
I, I would just say that I, since we've talked about what's happened in executive session already, this was brought to us as bringing in Jared with him spending more time with the town. Brought to us as an option to help the town in a time of need. This was not something that was brought to us as Jared wishing for a larger position.
However, you just heard from the town manager that that need is no longer there.
I would indicate, see, when you read this document on page one eleven, and it says, look at a great job, how, to you it reads, we're spending less on executive level salaries. To me, it reads, okay, in Victor, they have a budget officer, a finance director, a bookkeeper, a director of envelopment, a finance clerk, and a director of economic development. In Farmington, they have a budget officer, they have a finance director, they've got a director of development and a finance clerk. And we have a finance clerk and Doug. So to me, that reads two things. A, Doug is obviously taking on a lot of roles for the town. And B, what happens if Doug gets hit by a bus? That's not putting our town in a fair place, a safe place. So to me, that reads as dangerous. And I feel like it's my responsibility as a town board member to make sure that it's not just Doug that knows what's going on in, on an executive level in our town.
I, I agree with that line. I mean, when you look at that, I, I see that there are significant gaps if something should happen to Doug. And, and it, it's a real, to me, it's a real problem. And I think that we need to, I think some amount of additional responsibility is good, as long as it meets Doug's needs in contract.
So you feel ninety-four thousand is fair price?
I didn't say that.
Well, what is?
I, I don't know. I'd like to hear from the people that say, what, what is? And we're, we're.
Well, we know what the average was.
Right.
The average.
Is fifty-six thousand.
Did you accept that, Jared?
That's including the town. It's not about Jared, it's about the supervisor.
Supervisor.
Yeah, well, he's the person that's in that role right now.
Okay, well, Jared doesn't accept or not accept a price. It's about the supervisor's decision.
It's, there is a role, and at the end of the day, I mean, we have other supervisors in here. At the end of the day, it's somebody else who's coming in. You know, somebody else is coming in, however, however you stay, however long you stay, whenever you leave, so there's somebody else coming in. So it's about the role. It's about, you know, it's whoever it is at the end of the day, five, ten years from now as town manager, it's about that role. So it's not about that person, it's about the role. And the, and what that role is. So I think we need to not make it a name, it is the role and what it is and what it does. Because none of us, at the end of the day, none of us are, are indispensable, but we need to make a way that we have protection in case something happens. Any one of us in this room, whatever job we might have had, at the end of the day, somebody could come in tomorrow and do it. I know that might not make us happy, but at the end of the day, somebody else could come in and do that same job that we're doing.
That's right.
We'd be sad, they'd miss us, but somebody else could do it.
Can I? And, and I would add to that, if something were to happen, we'd go out and we would hire somebody that has the qualifications and the experience to fill that role.
But that's a difficult task, because, okay, sure.
Yes. Well, if, if I could address, because there's two topics that I think I just need to clarify, because I'm not sure that they were.
We're not, we're not letting you get hit by a bus. So no, don't, don't worry about that one.
I think that any manager, it's their responsibility to work on succession planning, whether it is officially named or otherwise. And in the town of Canada, we have never had an assistant town manager. I have never requested one officially. It has been discussed at different times, but I wasn't the one that brought it up. I've never requested that. What I have done, because I don't have the position of assistant town manager, is utilize senior staff to actually help them develop their talents. And five times, I've had senior staff that have gone on to take on leadership responsibilities, including leading another municipality. And the position that I traditionally use for that is either the planner or the human resource and payroll coordinator, and that's exactly what we have now. Our current human resource and payroll coordinator is taking on additional responsibility so that if I did get hit by a bus, she knows almost everything I'm involved with, working on, she knows everything. She doesn't have the title, no, and that's a, you know, almost a disservice to her. But she's learning and she could pick up the pieces. There may be some potholes, yes. But I, I just need to be crystal clear about that, and because that has worked. And now the village administrator of Perry, and now the assistant city manager of the city of Canada, we have both come from the town of Canada, as well as the province leader in Saudi Arabia, Saudi Arabia, Akram, have all come from the town of Canada after working with me in those types of leadership roles. The other thing is the assessor. You need to be crystal clear about that. There is. You need to be crystal clear about that. There is state law that governs what you can and cannot do. And it doesn't matter if you're a full-time supervisor or not. Your option is to terminate the assessor, to terminate the town manager, but you are not permitted under state law to tell the assessor what to do or anything else. And so let's just be clear about that. So.
No, that's correct. I just know that, um, with part of that, I believe Farmington let the assessor go, which raised some concerns. And then we brought the ass- the, the assessor in full time, the firm didn't let go.
And, and our assessor, even though there are those that disagree with it, the example that was used uh, is not the whole story. The person, uh, that was questioning actually did have an appointment with the board of assessment review. It was reviewed by the board of assessment review and a decision was made by the board of assessment review.
I was, I was talking about grievance day.
And so, well, but the person that had reached out, you had mentioned that. And so that person, no, you mentioned it. I wrote it down as you said it. You mentioned the person that-
Yes, I don't believe I said board of assessment review, but it was the grievance day appointment. Cause he re- yeah, he did reach out, the bar did hear it, but-
Right.
I mean-
I mean, grievance day was four days or five days and he had an appointment.
We had people who did not agree with it.
There was grievance day and then there were four different days where the board of assessment review met and made the decision.
What I'm, what I'm saying is with that, there were multiple people who, if you got an appointment with the assessor.
Right.
You were dropped by, you know, if it was thirty-five percent, cause that was the average, that's when you were dropped.
Well, there's all kinds of people that have implied any number of different things, right?
I mean, our, that's, we know by what our numbers drop that that was happening, that people were going into getting those lower. If you did not get an appointment with grievance day, I, I bet, I don't have effects in front of me, but it's probably a little bit more difficult to get the board of assessment review to review that versus grievance day. I don't have all those in front of me. But even if that's the numbers say one way or the other, another, that is perception. And that's another thing to try to stay out in front of. I know, and I nev- and I never meant to imply that I could say, or any supervisor could say to a, an assessor how to do their job, because that is clearly defined by state law. But other active su- there are other active supervisors within Ontario County who had a direct, you know, had that that some of those discussions with the assessors, uh, to help along that process. I mean, we were very limited. You were able to do it. You were able to help with those and you did a great job helping with some of those people who came in, uh, looking for numbers and looking for help and get, and pro- getting them ready for that. Uh, but what I'm saying is, and I, and I go back to that regardless of the, the nuts and bolts of it. The process was, um, to defend the process at the end of the day, you know, it was, it, it became difficult knowing that everybody had the same opportunities, uh, throughout the process.
And see, I would a hundred percent disagree with that. Every single person resident of the town of Canada that filed an RP two forty-five, which is the legal form, got a callback. And actually, since we're talking about it in succession planning, one hundred percent of those calls were made by myself and the human resource coordinator, yes, to set up their meetings with the board of assessment review. We called one hundred percent of those individuals and set those meetings up, and we kept the calendar because meanwhile, the assessor and the assistant assessor were actually meeting with the residents and doing those things. Now grievance day, May twenty-fifth or first, whichever day it was, that's a little different story, right? We had a lot of people here and everything.
But in addition to the pages that I called as well. I called multiple pages reminding people.
You called originally with the setup.
Right.
But myself and the human resource payroll coordinator called one hundred percent of them to set up those appointments with the board of assessment review.
All right. So I think the, the final point, I want to address both what headline says. That, um, this is part of the succession plan. I think Doug has very clearly said the succession plan is being worked on, has been worked on in the past. And I just want to point out that I was a chief operating officer of a hundred million dollar corporation and was also a chief operating officer of seventy-five million dollar corporation. And in any organization that I have been involved with that's been successful, you keep the CFO um, roles and responsibilities completely separate from the CFO role and responsibilities. You don't mingle those responsibilities because you don't want finances to be mingled with operations and operations to be mingled with finances. And I think the way we are set up organizationally, with the supervisor being the CFO, the town manager being the COO, and the board being the CEO, the chief executive officer of the organization, is, um, operationally, it works great and has been working great and, uh, so we do.
So you're, so-
And I have a couple to say. You want to open it up to the public, please?
You don't have anything else? I'll, I'll pause for a second. And we need, we need, we do, we have resolu- and that, we actually have a resolution we need to get to before the public hearing. So we'll have that option, uh, to get to that. But, um, I do, you know, I do agree with that financial and that operations side, that they, the importance of those being separated. I one hundred percent agree with what you just said. You know, with that, with the financial and the operations. Okay, so we have, um, there's a motion on the table and I believe it's had been seconded, and I think there was a little bit of discussion on it for a period of time. Okay, so motion first and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post?
Aye.
Okay. So that's a three to two vote, so the motion does not carry. All right. And just to clarify too, for those in the audience who are new to being here, um, that with a board of five, a quorum is three. So even if there are only three board members here, you would still need all three to vote affirmative for something to happen. Uh, that's state law. And it's, uh, it's clearly outlined in state law with that, with those, with those rules are. All right.
What that means is that ninety-four K is locked in.
Doesn't mean it's locked in. That's an incorrect statement. Doesn't mean it's locked in.
It is.
No, that's-
I don't sense any desire to change your, Jared.
I-
I think you're incorrect.
I, 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 I think you're incorrect.
I have a desire to change it.
Yeah. So let's hear what the, let's hear-
I just don't, I, I am not gonna throw a dart at a board at a meeting tonight. I think we need to discuss it further. We'll see. Okay.
Okay, so we do have one, uh, actually a little bit of priority business. Uh, I do, one of the priority business notes that I did want to bring up in response to what you had said, Mr. Loy about the VA flooding. Uh, some good news on that. We had, we actually had representatives from Congresswoman Tenny's office, Senator Schumer's office, and Sen- Senator Gillibrand's office on the same call. So we brought both branches, both parties together, uh, which doesn't happen very often. So we brought them all in together at, at the federal level, uh, and had some meetings, and there is traction. Uh, we did find out, uh, that we have the ability to request the stormwater management plans for the VA to know exactly what they have done and what they have not done, which is something that is not, we didn't know that we had the ability to even request it, being a town versus the federal government. So we have that, um, we're working on getting that documentation. Uh, the watershed manager and I have walked properties behind, immediately behind, going down East Street. We walked behind multiple residences, looking to try to, well, there are three issues at the VA hospital. There's East Street that is flooding. It's like a river going down East Street. There are some homes that have some dam, some flooding that we weren't sure if it was related to the VA or not. And then there was further down Bushwood Lane, which is insane, and further down the area that Mr. Loy was talking about. There's an issue that the, the VA needs to address for East Street. The residences that are kind of on the corner behind with fields behind, we're, we were able to, to kind of take that off the list, that the VA was responsible for that because of topography. The next step is finding out what their watershed, water mitigation plans are, water control, and then working with the state agencies, and we have traction with our federal representatives to force them to work, well, let me use the word, to work with them to improve their water control ability on the VA campus. So it doesn't keep flowing down to where you folks are.
Will, will your, uh, town engineer be involved in that review?
Yes. So they will, we have them, and I was talking to Kevin Albany about a different topic earlier, but they will be involved with part of it. We have the VA engineers as part of it. We have the watershed manager as part of it. So everybody working on that, trying to figure out what is going on. Now, can our town engineer tell the VA what to do? No. But at least it's progress to know that we can request from them what they have done, which before we were told, we just did it, you know, we don't have, we're, we don't have anything to give you. So that is a step. It's not gonna happen tomorrow, but we have another meeting, hopefully another meeting set up in the next week or two to be able to continue with a discussion. There is traction. They've had higher level representatives walking those areas as well. So they're feeling some of that. Some of that concern from the residents. Okay, so there, it doesn't help in the meantime. It doesn't help between now and when something will change, but it's better than where we were a month ago.
Well, I'd be glad to sit in on it.
Yes. And when we get to that point, we didn't want to bring in a whole red, we didn't want to bring all the residents in with a meeting with the VA, cause that could get bad real fast. We want to have this figured out and then have a resident discussion to find out what's, what's going on to inform everybody what the process is. Okay, so it's still, we're still working on that. Um, I did want to, we do have some budgetary items that are going to need to be addressed. Uh, we do have, um, let's see if I can get the reading here. We have our Farmington water contractual from two eighty-seven, two sixty-nine that dropped to eight, two eighty-five, two eighty-eight. That is what we paid to the Farmington Water District. Uh, because they maintain the Burke Yard Road Water Tank and they maintain that part of town. Uh, that's why you might see Farmington's trucks working near the high school, because that's part of the Farmington Water Dist- uh, Canada with Farmington Water District uh, up North Road in that area there. So that leaves a variance of one thousand nine hundred and eighty-one dollars that we will have to continue to discuss. And we don't need to have these discussions now, but we will have to have these to, to balance the budget. We also have uh, the one hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars that the city was requesting that we put into the water, uh, pump station and the improvements there to build the capital reserve fund for that. With the new agreement, uh, those costs will be included in the water rate rather than uh, in that one time, you know, that annual surcharge to build that.
That one ninety-four K can't be taken all of.
Yeah, it cannot be taken out of water. We can't move it somewhere else. So it either has to go, be put into a, a contingency to pay for some of the things within the water, within that water, just within that, anybody in the water districts, water meters, all sorts of things that we might need. Or, um, it needs to go back into the, be put back and the tax rate would be lowered from seventy cents to fifty-five cents.
Doug, what's your opinion? Get back over there.
Get back up there, Mr. Roy.
You should take the microphone over there.
Well, cause the public's getting-
Why don't you just move the desk over?
Um, so the, the email that Jared's referring to or the information is the information I shared with him earlier. So the one thing I would say about the hundred and ninety-four thousand, I put that a little bit later. I don't know if you had a chance to see that, that message. Um, the water superintendent has been requesting additional money for water meters that we have deferred and delayed. And so I think one of the conversations that we need to have, and I did update some, uh, projections over the next five years of where the water rate looks like it's gonna go now that we don't have to pay that two hundred or three hundred thousand dollars to the city of Canada. It, it significantly reduces because it's gonna be built into the rate.
We'll pay it.
We're paying, but not through the tax levy. Let me be clear about that, right?
So are you, the more water you use, the more you contribute.
The residents still ultimately, yes. Um, but where I had projected originally with that in there, the tax rate in five years was gonna be at a dollar or whatever it is. Now I think it's only gonna be about eighty some odd cents. So maybe we take some of that hundred and ninety-four thousand and put it in the twenty-four budget for the water meters that are needed. And then we phase in a smaller amount over the next couple of years and keep that rate a little more steady. It's gonna have to go up a little bit, but go up, you know, over ten cents or so, fifteen cents over the next couple of years.
I know you don't have the nu- you don't, you don't have the email in front of you, but the numbers that you had sent me. So what you're saying, so if we put, say we increase the contingency for a hundred thousand dollars for the twenty twenty-four water meters, and then fifty thousand year for the next three years, then the tax rate will not increase as significantly. And that will help stabilize that tax rate for, um, that water district.
Stabilize tax rate for everybody here. If you keep your water usage the same, you're gonna be paying that number. That number is one ninety-four. And it will up to, uh, four hundred thousand.
Yeah, it was, it was three, whatever it was, almost three hundred, two, whatever it was. But the new agreement is based on your usage, right? So-
As I said, usage stays the same each person.
Correct.
Your out-of-pocket costs are going to-
Going to go up for sure. Yes.
But that's also a fact of, if that, you know, the water station needs millions of dollars.
Oh, of course. I mean, it's gotta come from someplace.
Correct. Right.
One pack of the other.
And it's the most fair, what, you know, the, the agreement is the most fair way to do it. So if you're a high user, you will pay more, you will contribute more to the water tank towards the capital maintenance of that water tank versus if you're a single person, you know, if you're single all by yourself. The way before it would have been kicked right into the tax, the general tax rate. So everybody would have basically paid the same. Where this way, based on the usage, city's still getting the money for the maintenance that they need. Cause yeah, there are millions of dollars that need to be put into the water treatment plant, the water, uh, water pumping, pump station.
But Doug, do you have an estimate for how much money is needed to replace those water meters?
I think he said about a half million, but that doesn't all have to be done in a year. But it's can be phased in over time. But all the meters have to be replaced.
Does anybody have an issue with putting that one ninety-four towards the water meter replacement?
He, so Doug is, in, in this email, he's proposing splitting it. So a hundred thousand this year and then the remainder goes back.
Fifty thousand the following years, but I, Jim is at a conference. I just can't have that. I wasn't able to have the conversation with him today.
So this is something that we can have.
I think we need to talk to Jim.
Yeah.
And then.
This plants, this, this plants the seed. So this is, um, as we continue with the discussions, the next discussion that we're gonna have.
Um, that nineteen hundred eighty-one from the water district, the Farmington Water, we just can make that be in their unassigned funds to go, go towards the eventual water tower.
Yeah, so we can either just go into the fund balance for that district.
Yeah.
That, that's-
I think it makes sense to just put it in the fund balance of that district because they're gonna have a huge debt coming soon, so.
Yeah, that we should roll back in.
All right.
Okay, so we do have, uh, one resolution. This is resolution number, uh, twenty twenty-three, two forty-six. To support the authorization for the town of Canada to apply for a J cap, which is the, uh, for the courts, uh, grant from the Division of Professional and Court Services. From the court fund and seeker determination of non-significance. When this was typed up, it was, there's a little typo in there, but it's just clerical.
So moved.
Second. Okay, moving second and any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that resolution carries. That resolution is time sensitive. They had to have it in prior to our court meeting on Monday. So that is why we are putting that in here. All right. So we do have a public hearing tonight. I don't know if anybody was aware. We do have a public hearing on the budget. Uh, a couple of the, uh, points to make that I'd like to make before, uh, before we begin. So as we do, uh, the point of the public here, of a public hearing is to get input from residents. It's not a back and forth between board members and residents. Uh, that's something that is commented on a lot, that it's, but it's just a chance for, for residents to present their thoughts and their testimony, if you will, if you think, consider it like a court, uh, present your testimony and your, your, your feelings on a topic. Uh, present your testimony and your, your, your feelings on a topic. Uh, there, so we ask that you keep your comments directed to the board. Uh, and make your statements, uh, directly to board members and not to others who might be in the room. Before speaking, we ask that you submit your name and your address so that can be included in the record. Our clerks are fantastic and they've spent hours. Transcribing, uh, minutes and they're just, they're, they're amazing. And it just makes it easier if you have that in there. Uh, it's suggested to by New York State to have about a three to five minute. Limit for comments. So to take the split, the difference at four minutes, so I will have my timer set for four minutes for that. For those comments. Um, if you have more comments to make. Uh, you can submit your written comments to the clerk and they will be included in the record of the meeting. Uh, but during that public hearing, you get, you get one opportunity to speak and to share your thoughts on that. So if you don't have the time, if you run out of time, the alarm goes off, then you could submit your written, written comments to the clerk. Uh, and it will be included in the record of the meeting.
Mr. Supervisor.
Yes, sir.
Just so there's no misunderstanding, time is not transferable according to our rules.
Correct. We're not the Senate. You can cede your time to.
Can't yield.
You can't yield your time to the representative from somewhere in the chair behind you.
Any of you would try to do that to get an extra minute.
Right, you can't sell your time, you can't buy time, you can't trade time, you know, um. Anyhow, I was trying to think of some time joke or something, but I've got nothing. So. We're living on bar time, right? The time of our lives. Okay, so at this time, the, their public hearing on the preliminary budget of the town of Canadagua for the year twenty twenty-four. Uh, I declare this public hearing open and I invite all who would like to be heard at this time. So let's start in the front and work back. So Mr. Lloyd. Come on up, you're the first and if.
Thank you guys. Sitting right home, so appreciate you.
Yes, so yes, uh, so if there's anybody online, if you guys can chime in too, because I can't always see where the hands are.
Alright, set your timer. Hey, a quick question. I know you said, you know, it's not back and forth. When is the budget to be adopted? What day, date?
Uh, state law, well, state law and town law says it has to be adopted by the.
By the twentieth?
Twentieth of November, yes.
Is that, is that what's scheduled?
There is no, it's not scheduled, it's not scheduled for the sixteenth because there are too many questions. Coming out of this discussion. Uh, so it's right now in the res, there wasn't a resolution, well. There is a resolution in progress, in progress, but there were other tweaks and other things to be put in there. So as of right now, it is not on the, the agenda for the sixteenth.
But, but after the election. Okay, um. My.
It's gonna be done after the election?
You said November twentieth? You said November twentieth?
That's the deadline.
I'm gonna request that the town board doesn't answer any more questions.
Thank you, sir.
Comments can be addressed, not to single you out, sir. Um, Terry, you can ask your question, obviously, but I don't know that. That answer can't have been.
Okay.
Reached, right? So I'll reset your timer.
Alright, um, the reason I ask is, um, because what I have to say, and it's not personal. But I disagree with having two. Day-to-day managers in the town of Canadagua. In twenty seventeen, uh, the town residents, taxpayers. Um, at the request of the then town board, approved a town manager form of government. And from my point of view, it has functioned adequately, if not better than that. Um, what I see as a full-time supervisor is two people trying to run the show. I've seen that in my career when I worked for the city of Canadagua for thirty-five years, where we had a. Strong mayor who overran the manager and those of us that worked there didn't know who to answer to. That the residents, uh, also were confused who, who to respond to. Um, it, it, it creates chaos and I would urge you, I know tonight. You voted to move it on to the full budget, or at least I don't, I think is what happened and. Um, i- it's, it's, uh, the old slippery slope. Um, and I would hope that it doesn't. Go to that, um, and I, I do wanna, and it's not so much the money, but yeah, money is always important, especially on a year. When we all felt the impacts of revel. Um, revel happened to have it happen here in the town when inflationary, uh, or inflation. Uh, just affected all of us. It's, uh, it's a nice ego trip that here that your town, your home is worth millions. Um, when you know you're not gonna get that. But aside from that, um. Also on, I keep thinking, uh, I keep saying it's not the money, but also when you hire a full-time. Municipal employee, there's also benefits with it. Now I understand there won't be any medical benefits because that's provided by the county. But still typically with, with medical benefits, it's thirty percent. I'm speculating it's probably lower, this may be twenty percent. So the ninety-four is not ninety-four. Um, uh, moving along, um, I just want to remind, uh, you folks that boards are elected. And established to govern. Uh, they, uh, as a body, they are policymakers. They are not managers. They adopt policies, ordinances, local laws. They, they approve budgets. Um, the town manager is expected to carry out the board's directives. Um, and finally, uh, I, I just want to mention that I wrote several emails to you folks. Uh, in September when this came to light and, um. I, I, I don't need to repeat them to you. Unfortunately, they don't know what I had to say, but it goes along these lines that I just mentioned. Uh, finally, I, I saw on Facebook from a former, uh, town board member that, uh, it's not fair. For those that question this approach, that, uh, other, um. Um, municipalities within the county, whilst he said, uh, nearby. Um, have a, uh, uh, a manager, uh, supervisor. Uh, arrangement and I checked and in a, none in Ontario County have this. So, uh, with that, uh, I thank you for the time and, uh, I, I need to leave.
Okay, thank you. Good luck. Okay, yes.
Thank you very much. Uh, my name is Jane Baker and I live at six oh one two Woodbine Rise. And, um. Jared, as someone I've known for a long time. Um, I don't like to speak in a negative way about you, but I do not approve of this. Geometric change in salary and I do concur with Louis Loy. That, who is also a former student, that, uh, I do not think it is wise. Organizational method of running the town. And I thank you very much for your time and as a former town board member, I want to congratulate all of you. For working so hard. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Go ahead.
I wrote things down this time, so I'd be more concise.
I didn't. State your name, name and address, name for the.
Kathy Rayburn, thirty-three oh five Westlake Road. Um, Jared, I've always spoken highly of you, so this is not personal, but I don't like what you've done this year with this issue. Uh, the town manager is an employee and must be credentialed and qualified for their work. And is accountable to the five-person town board. This town manager can be immediately corrected, reprimanded, or even fired. The citizens are better served when the part-time town board hires appropriately credentialed employees. To handle the continuity of the daily running of the town of Canadagua. The citizens are not better served by paying a non-vetted, non-credentialed. Politically associated figure, a high salary. Plus a personal secretary, which is also requested in the buzz, budget at thirty thousand. When there is little oversight and no immediate ability to remove for lack of or poor performance. Keep professionals who are accountable, accountable for handling the details of running the town. With oversight from a part-time elected board. This is how our government was set up in twenty seventeen. It was modeled after the city of Canadagua. Because it was admired as being a very good way to run the government and it's worked well and we are very lucky to have our town manager. Uh, he's done a great job and I appreciate all of you serving. It's no small feat to volunteer your time like this. Uh, it is truly volunteer because you don't get paid a lot for it. If workload, um, oh, excuse me, increase the number of credentialed and vetted employees under the town manager. As tasks grow in scope. If workload for town board members increases, then increase the size of the board. Do not create permanent expenditures and salaries on unvetted, non-credentialed politicians. Do not deny citizens the opportunity to serve as town supervisor. By making the position full-time and out of their reach. Keep elected offices tenable for citizens. Don't put them further out of reach by making them full-time. Every election cycle, the supervisor may be replaced. This position is not meant to disrupt in that way. The town supervisor position is therefore no place for a lack of oversight, nor a place for an overabundance of power. This issue of creating a full-time job for the supervisor is anti-open government. Jared has been pressing for this since he assigned himself the job of budget officer earlier this year. Rather than that work being handled as usual by our credentialed town manager. I have always admired Jared's work in the past and I sent him emails with compliments. This turn of events on his part is bad for the town of Canadagua and I'm ashamed of him for the way he's gone about it. The one-sided article he placed in the Finger Lakes Times revealed the less-than-fair side of him I hadn't seen. If he wants to do the full-time work, then he should apply for the job of town manager. He would be judged on his credentials and business and accounting and town government education. His income level would be term, be determined by his skill sets and he would not set his own pay. If we had the newsletter.
That's time.
I have just two more points. I'll say them fast.
Alright, quickly.
If we had the newsletter, would Jared have revealed his push for high income and his desire to alter our town government? If the town of Canadagua needs a public relations, relations head, that person should be appropriately credentialed and vetted by the town board. And serve under the office of town manager. I understand Jared feels part of his ninety-four thousand is her PR work. Let's get a professional and make them an employee so the town board oversees this position. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, I am gonna have to ask that wherever you fit on the equation to, we have decorum in here, so. Applause is not appropriate, whether it's however, however, wherever you are on the, on the issue or, or comments regarding others. So, Susan? But we like the enthusiasm.
Um, Jared, I've worked with you on some committees.
Please.
Oh, sorry. Susan Shaw, thirty-one fifty Quail Bush Drive, Canadagua. Um, I'm gonna be quite frank. I'm not, I'm not trying to hurt people's feelings. Um, I'm not trying to be vindictive. I think I'm saying what some people want to hear. I think if this situation were put up to a public vote, it would have been over and done with. I don't believe the residents of the town of Canadagua would approve this. For some of you, and I'm gonna be frank. Jared, I've respected you for, I think you're a, a good teacher. I think you're a good community member. I think you went into becoming the town supervisor with, um, an open eye. But frankly, I'm appalled at you trying to, and I'm gonna use this word, hoodwink. The residents of town of Canadagua to try to get an increase in salary. I've heard the rumors that you want to do this because you want to raise your pay so that your average salary will be higher for teaching. I get it. I was a teacher. I worked in employees and I worked in teaching. But nobody gave most of us the benefit to have a three hundred percent increase in our salaries. She had to work for it. I'm not saying you haven't worked for it. I think you've done a pretty efficient job. I've heard from members of this board that we are looked at in town of Canadagua for having a town manager. I would concur. I think we are lucky to have a town manager. And I think it's a pretty bogus reason, Jared, saying that if something happened to Doug, we couldn't replace him. He just went to a town manager's meeting that there are fifty-five hundred town managers. And like you said, we're all replaceable. I don't know if some of you are voting in the method that you're voting because you want to get reelected. I hope that's not why. I hope you honestly care about the residents of this town. We had a significant increase, all of us. And yes, we could come to grieve. Well, what if we weren't there for those two weeks that we were allowed to grieve? Alright, we would have grieved. We know neighbors that grieved. But some people have busy schedules and can't make it in that timeframe. I hope you reconsider. The three hundred percent increase. It's not fair to the residents. It's not fair to the town. The rest of the employees are not getting three hundred percent. And many of you know that the hard work starts at the bottom. That's where I started and worked my way up, just like the rest of you did. So I certainly hope you look at those figures and Jared, I don't know how you can even. Say you would accept that, that you would accept that increase in price. Because I know you're a better person than that. I truly do. Um, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Leaf? Oh, I'm.
Hi, my name is, uh. I'll wait till I get here. Hi, my name is Sharon Nagel. I'm fifty-nine, ten Smith Road. Um, shame on me. I haven't participated in any local politics. No excuse for that, but I'm glad I'm here tonight. So I hear a lot of emotion and I hear a lot of people are upset. My thing as just a voting citizen and a resident of the town would be that I feel that midterm, this is an unusual change to make. And I think it would just seem more logical to me to make this kind of a, a change or whatever. Changes are coming for Canadagua. I've been here since eighty-eight. We've seen the change in the population. You know, what are all those numbers? What are those things? What does the town need? Are there, taking your point, Adeline? Are there other lines? When you were reading from Victor, the things that they have, like, well, what do we need? And I just think there's a pause. And you, and you take stock in what you have and what you need to do and that people will feel, as you use the word hoodwinked. Wow, when did this happen? We haven't seen the newsletter. You know, people with young families, they're busy, they won't know. I, I don't think it's a good feeling. I just, I just don't think moving forward that way is good. So thank you for that and I hope to get more involved.
Thank you very much.
This is driving me crazy. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We'll go with Karen, go ahead, then we'll go with Leaf and then the young lady in the front. Margaret.
I'm Karen Parkers and I live on Laura Lane. And I want to express my opinion about this three hundred and thirty percent increase in the town supervisor salary. Please note, Jared. Please note, Jared Simpson was not elected as a full-time supervisor. At the time of his election, the supervisor position was and still is part-time. The current issue with the supervisor salary is not related to making the position full-time. It is related to an elected part-time supervisor who wants a full-time salary. Kind of like putting the cart before the horse. Our town government has changed to a town manager type of system that has been working really well. In the past, and I've been here for many, many years watching the town board, full-time supervisors have not worked out well. They have not fulfilled the needs of our town. Before a salary is raised to a full-time salary, perhaps the town should establish and adopt a job description with a full designation of duties for both the town supervisor and the town manager. All of you need to take your responsibilities seriously. Jared was elected to a part-time position. The time to change those responsibilities is when reelection comes up, not partway through his second year as a supervisor. He has not demonstrated that he either has the capability or the knowledge to be a full-time manager of a multimillion-dollar organization. And that's my opinion, but I have a lot of backup my opinion. It's interesting that some of you are hell-bent on the salary increase. It shows how fully out of touch you are with the realities of running an efficient and successful organization. It's also time for you to realize that you work for all of the town of Canandaigua residents. There are qualities that every elected official should display. They should listen to their constituents, take action for the betterment of all of them. Holding a public office is an act of service to the public. That means all of the residents of the town, not just those who share your views or voted for you. It comes with an obligation to look beyond yourself and your own personal needs. To govern well, elected leaders should help each other and the public stay focused for the common good. As an elected official, you're a champion for civic achievement. You should be active in celebrating the achievements of your community. This is a main element of all of your positions on this board. And you should be ethical. You're serving the public rather than reaping personal benefit from your position. Now, I understand New York State municipal law excludes salaries from conflict of interest. However, in my opinion, a truly ethical person would not give himself a three-hundred-and-thirty percent raise in preparing a yearly budget unless there is really a good reason. And there's no really good reason here. Finally, Jared, you really do not deserve a raise in this second year as town supervisor. You've had difficulty in identifying goals to work on this year. There is no communication to the community via newsletters, nor town board agenda and reports. There are absolutely no reports attached to the downtown board agenda anymore. You're also involved in putting together that agenda, and it's incomplete. And I read it. I read it every single month, no matter how long or how short it is. And discussion about, just real, real quick, discussion about monthly resolutions take place at the finance committee. I don't think any resident in this town knows that that happens. So I'm going to close with this quotation that I've said before from Benjamin Franklin. "When the people find that they can vote themselves money, that will herald the end of the republic. Sell not liberty to purchase power."
All right. Thank you very much. Uh, Leaf, I believe you're next, and then we'll go here to Margaret, and then we'll come over here.
Good evening. My name's Leaf Hergesell. I live at six-two-four-five Rossier Road. I want to speak tonight as a veteran. I joined immediately after nine-eleven. I had to give my children the example of the difference that one individual can make. My son now serves as a machine gunner in the high north facing Russian aggression across the Arctic. Every man and woman must make a difference in big or little ways for our community to work. The more we look to pay professionals to do, the more our government becomes like a store where we purchase our rights from a shelf stocked by Albany and Washington. Tonight, we should not be focusing on money or Jared or Doug. Both of these men have done great service to their community. The board is well-equipped to set salaries, and our coffers will support their wisdom. Instead, we should focus on the philosophy of governance. Who will lead and why? Where is the ultimate authority for policy and decision-making and for executing that policy and exercising that authority? Who will stand for us against a distant government that increasingly intrudes in the lives of Canandaiguis? Who will we hold accountable? If the train jumps the rails? I cannot overstate the degree to which I value service. We do not go out and elect our admirals or our generals. They are professionals, like our town manager. But not letting the hired professionals lead us is what guarantees our freedom from unelected authority. I admire Doug as a man and as a servant of our community. There is none finer. But he saw a career. He did not seek an elected office. He did not apply to HR to lead this community. He applied to voters. When they elect you at the polls, they expect you to be the person to hold the reins of power. Of course, we need a town manager. Anybody can see that. It is a matter of balance between the expertise of the town manager and the accountability and the rights of the citizens to those whom they elect. I have served to defend that system, where those who we elect are accountable in all ways to me and to you. Our nation was founded on the principles that citizens in a free republic rule themselves, not professionals. I joined to defend a system where I have recourse through the ballot. The two upper tiers of our government are not controlled by our elected officials, but instead, we live our lives through regulation and not legislation. Permits, taxes, and fees dictated by those distant powers and often managed by professionals set the rules of life today. I would ask you how well that has worked of late. Our local elected officials are our last bulwark against a distant, uncaring bureaucracy. Our community requires the full-time elected representation, just like our roads require it through our highway superintendent. Our highway superintendent, who makes about five times more than our supervisor. I am sure Jared will do a great job with full-time responsibility. But if I or you or anyone decides that we don't like the job he's done, we fire him.
That's time. I'll give you twenty seconds like I gave everybody else.
It is tonight and like nights like this where freedom is refreshed or dimmed. I pray for our community and for those who serve her far away, like my son or our elected officials, and like our clerk and our voting-age citizens, and all who report to this town hall every day to work. I also pray for freedom. It is the fruit of elected citizens doing their duty.
Thank you very much.
My name is Margaret Cooper. I live at four-seven-oh-two Granville Park. And I have provided my full written statement to the town clerk, and I'm just going to abbreviate it. I am opposed to the salary increase for the position of supervisor. I think when the supervisor was elected, he knew what the salary was at that time, and he agreed to that for a four-year term. With regard to the communications officer being part of the reason for a proposed increase, should the current supervisor not be reelected in twenty-twenty-five? Will the new supervisor take on that role? Or would that position then be filled by a member of the town staff appointed by the town manager? I believe that allowing the elected town supervisor to choose what duties he wants to undertake is a precedent that is conflicting to our town manager. At the time the current supervisor was elected, the town was under the structure of a town manager who is responsible to the elected town board for the day-to-day operations of the town. The town manager form of government was decided upon so that the town would have continuity in the administration of its services and to allow the town supervisor of reprieve from day-to-day operations. In reality, the town manager should be appointing staff to fulfill the personal needs of the town. I believe that the taxpayers of the town of Canandaigua should not rely on a Facebook post in Canandaigua Chronicles to find out about a huge increase in the annual salary for our town supervisor. That said, I wish to reiterate the need for a monthly town newsletter so that our taxpayers are aware of the highlights of what's happening in town government. I believe in the past, the newsletter was written under the guidance of the town manager, and I hope that it will continue in that manner. It was very informative and appeared to be unbiased. I would also like to suggest that there be a job description for the elected position of supervisor if we don't already have one. This would be much like I would expect the town would have for the position of town manager. And thank you for listening to my comments.
Very much. All right. Go ahead, sir.
My name is Jack Kellon. Um, I live at forty-eight fifty-one Ashton Place. Uh, I've been a resident of Canandaigua since nineteen eighty-four. I found Canandaigua way back before then. And when I had a chance to move to Canandaigua, I said, this is where I'm going to die. A long time in the future, I hope. The problem is, is that we've had some really, really good people, even back in the eighties and, and in the nineties. And then the town and the townspeople took a path that we really need a full-time manager to handle the day-to-day things. And I think this town has been absolutely blessed with what they have found and what they have chosen as a manager. And I'm not going to mention any names, but I'm, I'm, if a bus runs over him, I'm backing that bus up. There's, there's no shoes big enough that would fill his shoes, whether it be, you know, somebody on the town board or somebody else, you know, in the general public. I would think and hope that this town board is.
Hang on, our town manager has replaced your mic battery.
It usually happens three or four times a night. It's not you.
Did you pause?
Yeah, I will, um.
Pause for microphone battery.
Yeah, this is not counting. I know. It's like the NFL.
I don't know. We obviously.
Let's try it again. Sorry. Okay.
I, I.
I won't start it for ten seconds because you had a kind of a laugh.
Start from the top, but I'm, I'm really, really hoping that those of you that are on the board that think that increasing the line item for the elected supervisor would be increased three times, I certainly hope that you'll see your way to an amendment of the final budget to go back and say, okay, you, we can do this, but let's amend it and carry forward. Because I think that, for all seriousness, that an elected position money increase, regardless of how much, shouldn't be for the current administration. It should be for the next administration, not the current. That's like voting yourself a raise. And I just think it's highly inappropriate. Thank you. Thank you.
Very much. And you still had lots of time left, even with all that stuff. You gave it away. You can't give it away.
No.
Can't sell it. Go ahead, Sandy.
Hi, I'm Sandy Roberts. I live at eleven, or fifty-five sixty-one Wells Curtis Road. I want to point out a few other things on the budget besides the seventy-two thousand dollar increase in supervisor salary, because these numbers I'm going to call out are a little bit larger than that and will hit our residents directly in their wallet. So I just am hoping that the town board has really studied these numbers and made sure that we're making the right decision for the twenty-twenty-four year. Um, so the past two days, I've been analyzing the differences between the current twenty-twenty-three budget and the preliminary twenty-twenty-four budget, both published on the town of Canandaigua website. Number one, in the preliminary twenty-twenty-four budget, tax revenues are increased seventeen percent over the twenty-twenty-three budget. That is six-hundred-and-eighty-six thousand dollars. This seems, this increase seems a little like salt on a wound from the people that were reassessed this year. And we just got our school taxes with increases. Just want to make that comment. The total expenditures, not including capital projects and Canandaigua Con's water, I'm not really sure what that is. I don't think we have control over that. And I, I eliminated capital projects because, of course, any given year we decide to do something, you know, we may have, if we've looked at, if you've looked at the past few years, one year it's five million, the next year it's one-point-two million, so it's kind of a nebulous number. It's not a general expenditures. So the total general expenditures, I'll call it, not including those, has increased six-point-eight-one percent. And that is nine-hundred-and-twenty thousand. For the research, I've found a three-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand increase in the DA one-hundred highway fund. So I'm going to follow up because then I realize a canvas question here. I'm going to follow up with a, um, written inquiry because I was unable to ascertain in the budget work papers what that equates to. What is it getting us for an extra three-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand? I know it's, um, in equipments and sales tax. That's what I do know. Um, the Fire District Fund has also increased two-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand, so I think we should, um, take a look at that. It's, uh, there is a seventeen-point-seven increase in that. By the way, the three-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand in the highway is a nine percent increase in that budget. I noted that our capital projects this year is zero, and it's typically been, um, you know, like I said, four million, one-point-two million, anywhere ranging really from four-hundred thousand up to something. So I thought it was a little peculiar that maybe we're not planning any projects this year. I don't know. And lastly, my comment, just in regard to the proposed supervisor structure change, it, it would seem to me, I wasn't involved five years ago or didn't really pay attention when the new, um, job org chart was created. It seemed to me there was some sort of approval of that new org chart. And like, as I, as I was listening to everyone talk today, I feel like there's two issues, right? The way we approach it, I work at Canandaigua National Bank, the way we approach it, it's like you want to change a position or you put a new position in, you make a decision on it, then you apply the salary. So it's kind of a two-decision thing instead of a one-step thing. So it's my comments, and thank you for listening.
All right, thank you. All right. Go ahead.
Kathy Guy, five-oh-four-eight County Road sixteen. Uh, I came over tonight to talk about all the uh, lack of clarity of why this should be a full-time job for supervisor and how, why the money was needed. Everybody did a great job of covering that for me. I don't feel that the potential duties were enough to raise that pay or raise that work time. And then, in fact, the seventy-two or three thousand dollars or more would be better spent for some of the repairs or computer updates and budget items that were turned down in the careful budgeting. I have a couple of other things that I was observing on the budget. When they look at comparables for other communities that are paying supervisors and managers. When they look at comparables for other communities that are paying supervisors and managers and so forth, they included places like Ithaca, Batavia, they are not comparable to our little town of Canandaigua. They're cities. So I don't think all the comparables are things you should pay attention to if you're looking at even just raising pay somewhat. I think the motion that was proposed tonight is the thing to do. The other thing that seemed really fishy for me, because I was trying to find job duties and responsibilities and comparing and looking at the budget, what were the claims that we needed to spend this huge amount of money on the supervisor? They were hard to find and hard to determine that they were actually sufficient or amounting to anything. But I found over looking at the town website over several days, things are being changed on the website right now. This may not be the right vocabulary, but the economic development section, a few days ago, I looked at it, and it sent me as a link to Mr. Finch's office and a whole list of different people who had activities related to economic development that could help people inquiring about things they might want to do in the county. When I went back to it to see the detail again yesterday or today, it went to the town supervisor's office and didn't give any information that was realistic or practical that a business would want to get to. What's happening besides underneath? Who's in charge of the website and who's connected to what? There's fishy stuff going on here.
Thank you very much. Sir?
I'm her husband, Andrew, A-N-D-R-O, Gagne, G-A-G-N-E, 5048 County Road 16. What she said, really impressed by what Ms. Rayburn said. You're very eloquent. You're Ms. Rayburn, is that right? Very eloquent presentation. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Do we have any hands online yet? Oh, Axana, go ahead. Is there a hand up in front? Two? Okay, so Axana, go ahead, then we'll come up here in the front.
Axana Fuller, 3971 County Road 16. I don't really have any prepared comments, but I feel that Jared has put this town in total chaos and irresponsibility. And the two board members that voted with him, I don't think they have done their due diligence. And I would also like to ask Dave Soder, who is going to be running for town board on November 7th. He hasn't spoken very much tonight, and I would like to hear why we should be voting for him and what his rationale has been. You know, for supporting this 300% salary increase. I have been a town resident for almost 40 years. Thirty of those years, I've been an activist. I've been a town board member at a time when chaos was rampant with the supervisors when I was on the town board. Terry, you know that. And actually, Dave, you know that also. Yeah. And in the end, in 1907, 2017, we decided to go the route of a town manager so that we did not have all that chaos and heartache and people being vindictive, just not being very nice towards each other. I mean, it was like the town was divided, and I feel that's how it is now. Because when I hear some people giving erroneous information, like a person wrote on Canandaigua Chronicles that the position of town manager has been an abject failure. And that person is a good friend of mine, and she should know better because she was on the town board with me and saw what was going on and experiencing all the chaos. So Jared, I don't know what you are, you have been thinking, but I don't know if you will be honest and actually say why you will be better for the town instead of the town manager. And I know it is political. I have been on the Town Republican Committee for over 20 years. I know how they operate. I had to resign because when they've, when they did a search for a supervisor and a town board member, they did not pick someone who is for the betterment of the town. No, they picked someone who knew absolutely nothing, but they were a Republican. And as a result.
That's time.
Okay, as a result, it was not a good thing for the town. And I can tell you that what you are trying to do is not for the betterment of the town. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. All right, in the front?
Von Chavez, 4400 Middle Cheshire Road, Canandaigua. I'm going to submit what I was going to speak tonight. I'll submit it in writing to town board. Because tonight, well, first of all, before the, the public comment started and the town board was discussing things amongst themselves, what appeared to me an aggressive confrontation tone, con, tone. Jared, I appreciate your civil response to that. I also appreciate those in the audience expressing opposition who remain civil without personal attacks. I appreciate the way the supervisor handled those personal attacks. Listening to the discussion or the sway or whatever of tonight, it seems to support an unelected person to be in charge of running the town. And even if an unintended circumstance gave a vacant seat to the town manager, the answer is to hire another town manager with no recognition to elected town board officials being involved in any, you know, between appointments or hiring. Sorry, I'm disjointed because I was taking notes while this was going on. This brings me to a point that is also included in the statement that I'll be sending. People here have expressed, here and on the street, have expressed frustration that the town is being run by an unelected official. I don't get the impression this is a statement against the town manager as much as a concern that an elected supervisor and an elected town board is not more involved in town business. Responsible leadership ensures that more than one person knows how to keep the town running, and we do not need more massive, unexpected bureaucracy. I really appreciate what the town board did tonight and the civility that was maintained by most. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, so anyone else would like to be heard at this time? Does anyone online would like, any hands for anyone online? If anybody online would like to speak? Please use the raised hand button. I'm not seeing any, but that doesn't mean that there aren't any. There you go. Wow, okay. I'm not seeing any hands. What's that? All right, so there will, like the item says, I'll give one last chance. Anyone else like to be heard? Okay. So at this time, as outlined, this public hearing will be continued to the 16th at the regularly scheduled board meeting that night. And that will be a final time for people to be heard on the topic. So at this time, I move to continue the town board. We will continue this resolution until this public hearing until the 16th. Yeah, we do not have any other business at this time to entertain. There is one final privilege of the floor. If there's anyone would like to be heard. We do not have any executive session requests, as I'm aware of. So at this time, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moving second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All right, meetings adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. Thank you for participating.